Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming. Welcome to our Columbus, Ohio Town Hall meeting and discussion on active shooter awareness and preparedness. My name is Manos Megazianis. I'm on the board of directors of the Homeland Security Foundation of America. My background is on cyber security. It doesn't really...I'm not an expert on active shooter, however, after 30 years of hanging out with guys like that, I became aware of all the dangers and all the challenges. And this is what we're trying to push from Homeland Security Foundation. The program is aware, and the important part is to have situation awareness, to know what's going on. That is the starting point for everything. In our 16 years of operation, we continue to share our message that preparedness saves lives. I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank our sponsors. Thank you, Safety Knows. I don't think we have somebody from them here today. And Access National Mortgage, thank you, Joe. Without your support, this could not happen. Thank you. Also, I would like to special thanks to Wendy Nikodimas and the Hilton Columbus Art Institute for sponsoring us. Midwest Event Partners, the guys with the fancy video equipment. Thank you, guys. And of course, our volunteers. Thank you. Active shooter incidents are increasing. Just turn on your TV, and you hear the bad news a little too often. Nearly a third of the world mass shootings have taken place in the United States. Incidents in schools and business represent seven out of 10 active shootings. Some of the country's most high-profile mass shootings have occurred in a place of business or schools, such as Sandy Hook, Columbine, Virginia Tech, San Bernardino. We are here today to talk about ways that we can work together to increase awareness of active shooter threats and explore preparedness strategies and response tactics. We have a very dynamic keynote speaker that...and afterwards, we will open up the floor for questions and answers. But first, I would like to introduce innovative rescue solutions, Rinke and Dunn. So, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you guys coming in today. I know that a lot of people are out there in that audience tonight, so I'm just gonna do the political wave, right? Thank you, guys, for showing up. You know, this is something that we take a lot of passion behind, and we believe in, that we have to get our community's support and communities working together. Our nation is fractionated in a lot of different ways, and that fractionation just doesn't bring that unity that we need. This program that we have is for being aware during the active shooter campaign, right? I guess where I'm...what I'm trying to come out and say, without being too politically incorrect, is that if we're not loving on one another, and we're not caring about one another, and we're not caring about our kids, and we're not caring about the people that we have with one another, right? Our relationships, be it diverse and religious and racial and all the different types of, you know, little fractionated pieces, the only way that we're ever really gonna fix this problem is to address those issues and work together to make a better community for us all. You know, it's bringing that love back into our hearts and putting that love back out to everybody else. There's so many kids out there that are stressed and that are broken, and we see a lot of that with what we do. My name is Rick Tresnick. I'm a 30-year paramedic and was a presidential medic for George Bush Senior, Secret Service trained, went around, and I watched how different people interact. That's what I do. I do that daily. And bringing in that situational awareness is something that is very important. Being mindful of where you're at. Maybe you've traveled to a foreign country and you feel a little uneasy, or maybe you have been to a place where you're in a crowd and you're not really feeling secure with where you are. Starting to realize and listen to that little voice is really important. Don Paulus.
Good morning. I'm retired lieutenant from the federal police. I've had 23 years of service and military service prior to that. I heard the word "passion." I've heard that word a lot just since I've been in Columbus the last couple of days in talking with some of these gentlemen that are in the room today. They tell me that I have that, and I believe they're correct. And the reason for that is, in 23 years of law enforcement, I'm a responder. You call, and you need help, I come and I try to help you. I'm a protector. That's what I wanna do. And what I discovered when I got on board with active threat training back in 2012 is that we're playing catch-up to a lot of other agencies, like fire departments. Law enforcement, you call us, we respond. Active threat situations, we've all seen it on the news. Five, six-minute response time from the time they get the call to the time they arrive. In that time, there are a lot of victims. So when I started looking at that, that's where my passion comes from, because I and other police officers cannot get there soon enough to stop those victims. So that drives me, it gives me a driven feeling to come out and to support this and to train it to as many people as I can, because it gives you something that you can do in those few minutes to get away, protect yourself, do whatever is necessary to be a survivor and not a victim. And that's something that I can't do when I'm responding, and we compare that and where my initial thought process came from is just looking at fire departments. Fire's a threat, and active shooter's a threat. In an active shooter, you don't know anything to do, you're not trained what to do, you wait for police. In a fire, we have fire drills, we have buildings that are built out of fire retardant materials. It's mandated. We have lighted exits, we have maps, we do fire drills, and we're told to get away from the threat of fire, number one thing. When there's a fire, if it's in the other end of the building, we're not gonna stay in here and wait and see if the fire gets to us, we evacuate. An active threat, active shooter, we lock down and stay in the building. So I do use those comparisons, because the fire department guys are way ahead of us. They're doing the same thing that I'm doing right now. They want you to get out of that threat of fire and live and be a survivor, not be a victim of the fire. So they put all this in place for you and allow you to do that. And the police, sadly, we don't have that. So now that I'm no longer an officer, that's what I do, and that's why. So that's where my passion comes from.
So you see all the accolades and stuff. That's not what's important here. What's important is you guys. We know what we're talking about, because we've lived it, we've been in it, we've seen it, and we're drilling on it. So today, I would want this to be a really open discussion today during the panel and what we're talking about, and so feel free to jump in with questions and things like that.
Let me try to get up here where I can see what we got, since we don't have our setup the way we normally do. This is just a definition of an active shooter, active shooter event. Very simply, you know, it's somebody that comes in, they take charge, and they're just moving around, and they're trying to either injure or kill people with whatever kind of weapon. We go with active threat, because there are all kinds of them. They come in with knives, they come in with blunt instruments. The most common is an active shooter. And that's when, you know, what we see the most on the news, they come in with a firearm of different types, and we don't really get into that either. We just realize that that's one of the primary things that they do, is come in with a firearm to injure and kill people. The thing that we really stress is these can happen instantly. I mean, there are all different types. You can have an active shooter where somebody sees the person, is aware, and can get out an alarm and an alert, and so nobody's in immediate danger, and you can get away, you can hide and do those things. But most often, it would be somebody just walking in the door with no warning, and they opened fire. And so they happen without warning, they evolve quickly, panic, chaos, that's what they play on, that's what they wanna see happen. Most of the time, when that occurs, there's no pattern in the selection of victims, they just see people, they shoot people. There are exceptions to that rule. We've seen where a disgruntled employee came into a workplace, and they had specific people, maybe the HR director who fired them, or something like that, so they may have a specific target. But on the most part of the ones that we see and that we've studied, it can be really random. They just come in and they attack. Rick's gonna go through some of the history. There is about 35 years of that history, and they can occur in just about every location.
So when we're looking at this, realize that really anywhere that we're at is really nowhere safe. We've lost our safe place, right? Even our homes are being invaded at times. So when we look at this, a lot of people are like, you know what, that'll never happen to my company, or that'll never happen to my school, or that'll never happen to my church, or that'll never happen to...or what's even worse is, we're not gonna prepare, because we're worried about the liability that comes if we do prepare, right? We hear that all the time, where people are saying, you know, if we address this, then we claim this and we own this. But the fact of the matter is, is that most of these events, if you do the training and you do, you know, look at your insurance policy, like today I was talking about insurance, right? Realize that even the liability in an insurance policy is not covering active shooter, right? So a lot of times, what we have is, it doesn't matter where this is or where you are, I mean, these things have been all over with large numbers of victims. And when we're talking about all the different places, I mean, we have seen it in schools, we've seen it in businesses. What was amazing to me is 45.6% of all these shootings occur in corporations, right? We only hear about a very small percentage. And when we're looking at that, you know, if you look at different statistics, there's already been 1,645 shootings this year in America today. But yet, our news is only picking up on a very small portion of this. It's because there's political motivators behind it. And so we have taught classes where, two weeks after we have done teaching the class, they've had an event, right? And it amazes me at how people are getting this mindset of like, it's not gonna happen here, so I'm not gonna do anything about it, and then they have large groups of fatalities. McDonald's, post offices, cafeterias, high schools, shopping malls, right? Virginia Tech. Virginia Tech was sued $1 million per individual that was shot, all right? How does any business, how does any school handle that type of a crash on their economy? That's only from the shootings, not PTSD, not all the mental health issues that are related to it, not all the damages to the building, not all the...there was people getting sued that were running away from the scene and fall down and become injured. And those people then sue, and then the insurance company comes in and says, you know what? It was an active shooter event. It's not covered. No umbrella policy. Bombs, not covered. Some policies are so stupid in the way that they're written, that unless the bomb is strapped to the person's body when it goes off, that's when it's deemed a threat. So the Boston bombing, you know, Boston Marathon, where the bag is sitting outside and the bomb goes off, not covered, sorry. So how do we, as a society, need to fix it? Where do we need to go with this? Because what we're sitting here, we're seeing military bases, we're seeing theaters, elementary schools, churches, right? I can't read that one. Nonprofit companies, right? Nightclubs, airports, big hotels, right? We see all these things occur, but if we don't have a plan in place and we don't look at this in a more effective manner, we're all at risk. Just from a show of hands, if a gunman walks in that back door right now at this event, how many of you guys would hide? Maybe, right? Run, hide, fight, right? You don't know how many times I'll walk in and I'll say that, and where are you gonna hide? All of a sudden, they're like, oh, hide behind that chair. Well, you think that chair is gonna stop something, right? You can't even crawl out along the floor to get up to the outside to get running away. So we have to be thinking about this, you know? We have armed security here. That's a good start. It can happen anywhere, right? It can happen at any time. So do you prepare only a fraction of your people that you're dealing with? So many times, we hear, you know, if we train on this, the shooter is gonna be trained in what we do, okay? Well, if that shooter is trained in what we do, then that shooter can react to it, correct? And then all of a sudden, destroy the plan. But the thing is, is the mindset isn't there. These guys are walking in the door with the mindset of killing and being in charge. And if you take that power away from that individual at that very moment, that disrupts his plan.
So like Rick was saying, the events that we've shown are only a portion. There's 35 years, basically, give or take, of history of active threat events, starting back with Columbine and moving forward with all the schools and businesses, hospitals, any environment you can think of. We've seen it happen. The one thing that we see is large numbers of victims continuously. And there's a question that we all need to ask ourselves right now, is why? Why do we continue to see large numbers of victims? We've seen 35 years of this. We should've gained some knowledge on what's going on and how it's happening and be ready to prepare to do something different. And what we're seeing is, and we kinda talked about this at lunch yesterday real briefly, the fact is, is that we have a shooting event now, and they've been so common in 35 years that they come out on the media, and it's on the news, and people are like, oh my gosh, that's terrible, you know? Where we work, we need to make a plan, because that could...look where that just happened, it's the same kind of business we are, so it could happen here. And then about three days later, eh, you know, they just forget about it. Or they look into it and see what it's gonna take, and it's not an easy thing. It takes planning, it takes preparedness, it takes bringing people in to do training and putting plans in place and things like that. So they just lose that interest, and then another shooting event occurs, and then everybody's all peaked again, and oh my gosh, we gotta do something. And then in three days, it's like, eh, same thing, over and over. So we are not preparing, we're not changing, and we're gonna continue to see those large numbers of victims until we do. And that's the beauty of this aware campaign, that's what we're doing. We're trying to bring this awareness to everybody, let them know we can't continue to do this. If we want to lower those numbers of victims and we wanna lower the number of these events, we gotta be prepared, we've gotta do things and be proactive, not reactive. They were, you know, as I said earlier, they come in without warning, the victims are random, different types of weapons are used. There's different age, different backgrounds, different ethnicities. There's all kinds of different factors that happen, but the one thing in common is always the same: violence. And another thing that's always common is mental health issues. Mental health issues are, you know, it's not normal for a person to wanna walk in and kill 10 or 15 people, that's not normal. There's something wrong, and we're not addressing that. So even though I'm an active threat trainer, I know that most of these guys are coming in here, and this is the problem, it's mental health. Large numbers of victims, not normal behavior, mental health issues. So if we look at the progression of active threat events, we see these numbers that come from FBI statistics, and we see a huge increase. I mean, by the time you get to where we are now, you can see the progressiveness. It's getting worse, it's not getting better. We're getting more victims instead of less, so it goes back to what I said, we're not preparing, we're not ready, we're not doing anything about it. And one of the reasons that we keep seeing the same number of victims, we're not preparing, and we're doing the same thing that doesn't work, we're giving them victims, we're creating victims, we're becoming victims, because it's a mindset that we've been trained and we've been subjected to for so long that people don't think outside of that. And it's so simple, when you tell them and you show them, it's like a light came on, well, why didn't I think of that? And the most common thing I can tell you about that is the most recent one that was in the media, Annapolis. A person walked in and shot people. This was really an eye-opener, and it was the first time in a long time that I've heard they interviewed some of the survivors. And what I heard the survivors say, two gentlemen that they interviewed had a common thread. They said they heard shooting, they started seeing people falling, they realized that there were victims, and they had no idea what to do, so they just crouched by their chair, by their desk, they didn't know what to do, they hadn't been trained, they hadn't been told, they had no idea what to do, they just panicked. Human instinct that is there and channeled into us has been buried, you know? So they didn't know what to do, and they did nothing, and that results in more victims. So when you don't have any planning, you don't have any training, larger number of victims, they continue to do that. Most of these places that do train and have training in place, including a lot of our schools still, are locked down. So we have an active threat. Lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. Teachers lock the door, the kids huddle together. If the shooter gets in, he doesn't have to be a skilled marksman, he doesn't have to really aim, he just points and pulls the trigger, and you have victims. We create that environment, we give him that environment, because that's what we train people to do, and that's what needs to change. We have some people in here that I talked to earlier, that they know that that needed to change, and they've done it in school systems and other things. So that's what we are trying to do. The lockdown procedures, they're most common, and there are good and bad things to lockdown. We utilize lockdown as part of our training, it's one option, but only one option, not the only option. And we do that, because, you know, if we train people effectively to do lockdown better, what we're seeing now is a school teacher locks the door. If she locks the door, and the shooter can't get in right away, he might go on, or he might shoot the door and come in, and you still have victims in there. If she can lock down more effectively, and some of the things you'll see on the table back there that we have on display are aids to use in that situation to secure the door, barricade better. We teach all those things, and that's what people need to know. Not just lock the door, but what can we do better? Barricade the door, do different things inside of there that they need to know about. So the more people that we put in lockdown, the more number of victims we are leaving available to that shooter. They just create the environment where the shooter can go from room to room, there's no resistance, he goes in one room, he shoots, they're locked down, he goes in the next room, no resistance. It's continued mayhem until the police do arrive. So what we need to do to improve? If we wanna change the outcomes, we're gonna have to move away from only having that one thing, and we're gonna have to do some other things. We need to plan, we need to know what we have in place to protect against these events, plan strategies, improve our procedures and decrease the number of victims. Training, that's the key. You can tell people what to do, but it's much better to show them and demonstrate it and let them see that it works, so that they're comfortable with it, and then they don't have to think about it. In the moment that it occurs, there's no thought process. We've seen this, we practiced it, we know it works, and they just do it. Whereas if you just show them a video, or you let them read something that says, okay, this is what you do when you have an active threat, they won't remember that, because they gotta think. You're not thinking when an active shooter comes in and starts shooting, you're not thinking. You go into panic mode. So you have to be trained and you have to practice. Policies, we need to have policies in place, implemented, that require training, require drilling, just like we do fire drills. We plan, we practice it, so that when it happens, we've done this before, we know what to do, you're calmer, you have a plan that you believe in, and it saves lives. And that's the things that we need to do to improve the situation. When we're gonna plan these, we need to know what's there now. So if we're gonna go to a school, and we're gonna say, this school wants to do something to be better prepared for an active threat, we wanna know what they have in place now. What, do you have a single entry point, cameras, electronic door locks, you have an armed guard in your school? All those things come into play with setting a plan in place. You work with law enforcement and EMS, because this is gonna happen at the school, and the people there need to have a plan, but law enforcement's gonna respond, EMS is gonna respond, and they need to know what you're doing or not doing in the school, so that when they respond, they respond appropriately. One of the things that we talk about when we deal with this is escape and evacuation. If people are gonna escape and evacuate a scene and get away from the shooter, they need a place to go, where there's accountability, where there's safety. So when you coordinate with law enforcement and EMS, you tell them, these are our evacuation points, these are locations that people are gonna run to and get away if they can escape. We need police to respond there to protect them in case the shooter follows them. We need EMS in case somebody's injured and they go to that place, and EMS can't be at the main location anyway, they gotta stage. So these are perfect things. And the law enforcement then knows your plan, and so it's all coordinated ahead of time. And that is a key thing that gets missed a lot of times. When people have training, when they have plans, they don't coordinate with other agencies. Implement those policies and procedures, so people know how to do these things, and you practice them in drills. You just need to make sure that people are prepared. One of the key things that Rick and I noticed when we started this, there are a lot of active shooter trainings, there are a lot of good trainings out there, but they're kind of an A, B, C. Run, hide, fight, do this, do this, do this. And you can utilize that, and I'm not knocking it one bit, because just taking that information and remembering that you can use it in all different situations is good. But something that we learned is how to adapt it to every type of location. If you're in a hospital, you're not gonna do those procedures the same way, because you have patients, you have visitors, all kinds of different people, not just your students and teachers. So you gotta adapt that training, and you have to make it fit a hospital. If you're gonna do it at a hotel, it's gotta fit the hotel. The staff have to know, they're not just saving themselves, you have all the guests and visitors that are in the hotel, you have to know what to do. And if you just get the A, B, C training, that's one size fits all, it's not gonna teach those people how to react and how to help other people, so you still could have large numbers of victims. You wanna train as many people as possible on all the options that they can do, how to do them. You want to provide them with the knowledge and equipment, such as the barricades, and tell them how to use desks and chairs, and show them where places are in their facility. When we do a site survey, we go through that facility and we say, you know what? facility. When we do a site survey, we go through that facility and we say, you know what? While we were going through, we saw this boiler room. Man, if people can get in there and hide, this guy, it's like a fortress. Nobody can get in there. And inside there on the wall, there's one of these defender systems that when you get the door closed and people get in there, you can put this thing on and it makes the door where you can't even get in. And one thing that we've learned about these guys is the more secure the area is, the more likely they are to move on because they want victims. They want body counts. They wanna beat the last guy that did an active shooter event. So if we prevent them from getting in, they're not gonna stay there and try to get into ten people. They're gonna move on to another door. So the more we do that training and barricading, the better. So we reduce the victims, we reduce liability. The more that your staff or your people are trained, the more options they have, the lesser liability is for anything that occurs during that event. And that's what I just talked about, the one size fits all. Got huddled myself a little Make sure your training addresses the shooter mentality. Rick mentioned this earlier, okay? We get a lot of what-ifs. When we start doing training and we start showing people options and countermeasures and all these things and run, hide and fight, well, what if, what if, what if, you know, fifty questions of what if. Every situation's gonna be different. But you take that information that we give you and you apply it to that situation because we can't cover every one of them. You never can. You have to make sure that you understand whether the shooter's been a student in your school and he had the active shooter training that all the students did, so he's aware and he knows what they're gonna do. Whether he knows that or not, he still walks in the door with power. He has the gun, nobody else has a gun. He's now in control of 250 people in that school and he knows it. He's not gonna walk around thinking about, oh, they know training, they know how to do this and that. No. He's gonna go in that door with that gun and he's gonna shoot. We see it time and time again, even if they know that there are policies and things in place. That's what they do and you have to be prepared and know that that's what it is. So when we get into the three basic principles of active shooter training so that people are aware what they are, run. It's, it's a natural instinct. I, I mentioned earlier, human instinct is the same as animal instinct. Example I use, if you have a dog, he's a loyal dog, he's your, he's your buddy, you've always treated him nice, but something happened, he did something, tore up your couch or whatever, and you get mad and you kick him. And he's like, that's never happened before. And you lean down to do something and he runs away from you. And you follow him, come back here, come back here. And he goes down the hallway and he gets away in a bedroom and he hides under the bed. So now he's ran away, he's hiding, and you go in and reach under the bed, whether your intentions are to hurt him again or to pet him and say, I'm sorry, he'll probably bite you. Run, hide, fight. Animal instinct, human instinct. It's in us. We've just blocked it and covered it up. So if we can run away from an active shooter, do so. That's the best option. If you're not there, you're not a victim. If we can hide and we teach how to barricade and know what to do in that situation, barricade better, prepare better, more people are aware, more things are in place and there's a plan, that's gonna work better. And then, that one that everybody hates, fight. If you can't get away, if you're locked down and you've done the best that you can do to prevent the guy from coming in and shooting you, you gotta do something. If he gets in, it's a given. He's gonna shoot. So you've gotta have something in place where you know how to fight. That's what aware is about. That's what active threat training is about, to make sure that you know what to do when that occurs. It's a last resort. It's not a hundred percent. I wish I could tell you, if you have my training, you're never gonna get killed by an active shooter. I wish I could say that, but I can't. Because there's still opportunity for him to come in, and even if we attack him, even if we do these countermeasures and we do what we train you, there's risk that he can still pull the trigger and shoot somebody. But I guarantee you, he can't shoot fifteen or twenty people in that room if we do these things. That's the big difference. Some of the things that we just touch on briefly is it's not just about what occurs, it's afterwards. Okay, you need to have things in place in your plan too, to help people that watch their best friend become a victim. They saw their best friend get gunned down. They're gonna have a lot of problems. They're gonna have issues with that. You need things in place afterwards to help them. So it's part of the plan to prevent, to prepare, and then to deal with the aftermath. Grief counselors, things like that. Liability that Rick's touched on, you need to be prepared for that. You need to know what you have in place for insurance and things like that. The best part of all this is that there are ways to get this. This training and this preparation isn't free. It does, it has an expense. And there are ways out there to get grant money, there are ways out there to, to find funding. So you go together with other organizations and pull this together and make it happen. And you can get backup from law enforcement to assist you with finding that. All kinds of things are available so we can actually follow through and do this and not say, oh, we had a terrible shooting today and then three days later let it go. These are things available to make us go ahead and search and look into it and make it happen. Community partners, like I said, law enforcement, EMS, other locations that we work together with, that's key, to do it as a team. And so you're not just preparing your location, but a whole community can prepare together so that everybody knows what to do. These are the funding options, grant money, all kinds of things available. Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Homeland Security has funding options out there because they really push this. There are all kinds of things that you can do. Rick, you wanna go through the...
So, here's, here's the gist, okay? It's not run, hide, fight. It's, it's a mixture of all those different things. It's utilizing different tools and equipment and, and resources that you have. Sometimes you may have those resources at your, at your hands, you know? If you're a school system, you know, you need to be able to lock down those doors. If you're in a corporation, you need to be able to have good, good strategic planning and, and recurrent drills and preparation. You, you have everything at your disposal. Right now, you're sitting in a, in a auditorium here where you have chairs and you have books and you have coffee cups and you have all sorts of things that you can react with those, with those people that are, that are coming and being aggressors. It's fluid. You may, you may step out into the hall because you're gonna run and be confronted with the, by the gunman right there. And all of a sudden, your plan from escaping changes and now you may have to fight. Or, you may be in a place where you can hide temporarily until somebody else, until the gunman's in some other area or subdued, and then you can escape. All these things, it's a fluid type of thing. What I say is it's like this. So you're walking in the woods and all of a sudden there's a bear, right? And your choice is this. You, you're looking at that bear down the, down the trail and you have to think, am I far enough ahead of him that I can run and get away? Right? Two, do I hide? Right? Do I try to climb a tree? Do I lay on the ground? Do I, do I play dead? You're gonna end up getting eaten, right? Or do you, do you take advantage of that bear's thought process? And that bear's thought process is this. That bear knows he's three times your size. He knows he's got claws. He knows he's got a big old mouth and he can kill you in a minute. He does it to deer and does it to everything else. He doesn't look at you as a threat. So do you make yourself bigger? Do you make yourself stronger? Do you make yourself louder? And take advantage of that. That gunman's walking into this place with the mindset of killing people. He is in control. He is in charge, right? Being able to identify that and respond to him is the key to this. It's the key to this. It's how to respond effectively. It's being situationally aware, but all of a sudden, that person isn't expecting somebody to come up and knock the gun out of his hand. He's not expecting somebody to jump on top of him. We, we've, we've seen some great heroes here recently that have taken a couple bullets and given people enough time to react and to take these people down. We saw a group of, of junior high kids that the teacher said, hey, everybody bring in a can of, of canned food. We're gonna set it on a shelf over here in the, in the cabinet. And at the end of the year, if we don't have an active shooter event, we're gonna give that and donate that back to some food bank, right? But that, that school gunman walks in, junior high kids, right? The alarm goes out because their preparation was right. Active shooter, active shooter, active shooter, this area. Teacher bars the door, shuts the door, right? Disperses all that canned food. And when that man walked in the door and they, those kids started chucking cans of beans and corn and whatnot, nailing him in the head, all of a sudden, he's down on the floor. Then they swarm on top of him and they hold him to the floor. When the cops get there, not one person's been shot. This guy's been screwed up and he's laying on the floor. Those are powerful things. We have to, we have to start looking at this as from a societal perspective. There's a lot of moving parts. Mental health, working with businesses, training, funding. There's a lot of stuff going on. This group of, of people up here has devoted their time to come up and, and just share that. So, without further ado...
One of the best ways that I can put that into a real brief statement that'll stick with it is right there at the bottom. In a moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing you can do is the wrong thing, but the worst thing you can do is nothing. And we see that time after time in these active shooter events. And that's what we wanna try to end. And like I told you guys earlier, we can stand up here and talk, we can show you statistics, we can do all kinds of things to get this across. But when we do this training, there's where the power is. That's where we empower people. And I wanna give you an example of that. I wanna take you inside and show you why, when you see this on TV, there's X amount of victims. I wanna show you how that works. I'll probably have to go down there so I can hit play. I have a couple of videos and these were filmed in training. It's a young group, a youth group from a church that I trained and... So what you see on the screen is they're up on a stage and they're at a training course that I was given for a community. And they've already been trained in the techniques that we teach. They're gonna demonstrate an active shooter event, the way it happens now, when you go into lockdown and that's all you do. I don't know if you can hear, but you're gonna have an announcement of an active threat situation and they're gonna announce go into lockdown. I'm not sure which slide he's got that on. it to the community, these are their kids. They got so drawn into this occurring on the stage with their kids that people were crying watching this and hearing that girl, she's a good actor. But that is what happens. That's what you don't see on the news. That's it, right there. That's why. Fifteen victims, five victims, seven victims, twenty victims. They lock down, they huddle in place, hoping and waiting for the police. Police got there. You know, there I am. I'm coming to save you, but I'm too late. So, we wanna make sure that you have those tools and you have the power. Now I wanna show you the difference. After that same group of kids were trained, same exact scenario, and this is only one of the scenarios that we train. This is only one of the things that we train people for, Lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. Active shooter. Teacher calmly giving instructions, showing them what to do. In the first video, they had their backpacks sitting right by their chairs. They left them there and went over and huddled. Now you see them with their backpacks because they've been trained to do things differently. This is a twenty-one-year-old active army, young man home on leave that was in this youth group when I did the training. And he came back and he volunteered to be the bad guy. When he got up off of this pile, he was not feeling real good. He told me the next couple of days, he was very sore. He was trying with everything he had to get up. If you notice, there's only one young man in that video that are helping the girls. There were two girls by the door that did that takedown. And that was after training once and having a couple of run-throughs where they practiced it. And then they did it, for real. That was live, takeoff, the shooter came in fast, gun up, ready to shoot people, and this is what happened. Big difference from the first video, right? That's the impact that this kinda training can have. I have one more that is just basically a repeat, but it'll give you a... It'll give you a little bit different view of it and it's slower so you can see what is occurring. Gun coming in straight up, backpacks hitting him. They do the takedown. She wrapped her hands around his ankles. Somebody wraps their hands around your ankles when you're moving forward, you're gonna fall down. Second person is shoving. Everybody's throwing those countermeasures so that he's distracted. He can't see, he can't aim, he can't shoot. He doesn't even see those people by the door. He knew they were there. That's the funny part. He knew they were there because he sat there and went through the training. That goes back and answers that question. What if your student's the one that comes in and being the bad guy and knows what you've trained for? This guy knew what they were gonna do and they
Thank you, guys. We're running a little bit behind schedule. And originally, the video was not supposed to, it was not part of the show. But when I saw it this morning, I knew that they were filming it. I knew the story, the scenario that they were trying. But when they showed me this morning, I had a tear in my eye. And when you see the second video and see how simple it is, it does make a difference. That's why I asked them to make sure that they show it even though we're a little bit behind schedule. I have a brother-in-law who's former law enforcement. I have a niece who's a nurse. And my guess is that each of you know heroes as well. How many of you are veterans? Okay, about half. Any firefighters, retired firefighters, any law enforcement? You know, we have law enforcement outside. Don is law enforcement. Any medical backgrounds? Okay? Any teachers? How many of you know teachers? Everybody knows a teacher. How many of you know somebody in healthcare? Okay? All of a sudden, all the hands go up. How many of you know a veteran? Okay? How many of you know a firefighter or a police officer? Again, almost everybody knows heroes. How often are you willing to take out your checkbook and write them a $2,000 check and say, "Thank you very much for your service"? How many of you would like to do that? Let's start with that question. All right, everybody would love to do that, right? How many practically speaking can do that? Very few. I'm very proud that that's what we do on a daily basis. We started Heroes Come First to be able to reward and say thank you to those heroes. How do we do it? Whenever they buy, sell, or refinance a home, not something that happens every year, but happens for most people multiple times in their lifetime, we will give those people an average of $2,000 to say thank you for their service. So that's why we're partnering here. We're trying to help reward and give back financially in a practical way. I ask you, there's some cards out on the table. Feel free to take as many as you want. If you know a teacher, a firefighter, a law enforcement, a veteran, give them one of those cards and just say, hey, whenever you get in that position, we'll help you find a Realtor who will share their commission with you as a thank you. We'll find a title company who'll give you discount. I'm on the mortgage side. We'll give 500 to $1,000 to you as a thank you. So thank you for letting us be a part of it.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Access National Mortgage. Thank you for sponsoring us and for everything you're doing for Heroes Come First. Rick, would you like to introduce the keynote?
All right, so our keynote speaker today, Dr. Greg McDonald. He's an odontologist. He is, when you, when you look at his, his background and his resume, I just want to go over a few things on this because I'm going to tell you, this is an amazing man. I sat here and I, I looked at it and I'm like, wow, you know? Not only was he a responder at 9/11, he, he has been, he has been instrumental in disaster With the, with his, with his professional background, he's part of the American Society of Forensic Odontology, Fraternal Order of the Police, Internal Association of Bomb Technicians and Investigators. Okay, so when they first told me that, that he's coming to the table, I'm like, how is, how does this, how does this jive? He was at the World Trade Center. He was one of the first responders. He has a impacting story that goes along with preparedness with that. The Ohio Department of Health and Dental Liaison for Mass Disaster, Director of Mass Disaster Team in Dayton, Coroner's Investigator, Forensic Dentist, State of Ohio, Chief Forensic Odontologist, State of Ohio, Homeland Security Tri-State Medical Reserve. His education just gets way into things. Wright-Patterson Air Force Base Mass Disaster Training, Introduction to Surveillance Detection, Southern Ohio Anti-Terrorism, and Federal Air Marshal Service. Terrorist Identification with the Department of Treasury, Homeland Security Planning for Local Government, American Medical Association, Basic Disaster Life Support, Clear Creek Fire Department Hazmat Decan Awareness, National Incident Management. He's got all the FEMA numbers behind his name. Bureau of Justice Assistance in Local Anti-Terrorism Training. He's a train-the-trainer, so he's not just the guy that took a class. He's out there teaching. Specialized Workshop on Terrorism, Homeland Security Incident Management, Weapons of Mass Destruction, Unified Command. He is, he's one of these guys that when you sit and you meet him and you're like, you realize what he has went through in his life and what he has done. Not only do you find a really big heart, and that's what I like about him, but I find that this is a man that has devoted a lot of his experience and his life to trying to protect us and get us in a better place. So without further ado, I'd like to bring forward Dr. Gregory McDonald.
Wow, I don't know if I could live up to all that or not, but anyway, it's interesting that, uh, let's see if I can fit in here. Okay. I am a general dentist out of Springboro, Ohio, which is south of Dayton. And listening to Don and Rick talk about this incident awareness like this, I think back to my own dental office down there and think, what could we do in that office? And it's kind of open, but what can I do to protect my staff and my patients? And that's, that's a pretty important thing. So thank you for that information. It gives me some thought process when I go back to my office tomorrow. Who I am? Well, I'm a graduate of the University of Dayton, and I'm also a graduate of the University of Tennessee College of Dentistry, even though I bleed scarlet and gray. I still graduate from down in Memphis where the dental school is. As they were saying, I do work for two coroner's agencies. In the Warren County Coroner's Office as an investigator, even though we have more homicide investigators now take most of the call. But for Montgomery County, we are the regional crime lab, as well as we do 40 counties in Southern Ohio that we respond to forensically. So I have a team there that we have, and this all kind of started after I got through dental school. I did an autopsy in dental school, and I thought, well, I came back to Ohio where I was from and joined the local society, dental society, and that was kind of a cool thing. But then in 1995, it all started for me as far as the forensic career, and that started with Oklahoma City. As the bombings went there, I'm going, okay, what do we do here? We have Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, we have a large private sector, and what do we do in case of a disaster? And we had nothing in place. And this goes back to preparedness that we talk about even for active shooters, but it goes for everything disaster-wise, and that's what I'm talking about today. So as I moved up through the ranks of the dental society in a local, small group in Dayton, I put a small team of about five or six other dentists that I trained together because I was trained formerly at the Armed Forces Institute of Pathology in Bethesda, Maryland. It was kind of the gold standard for training all forensic dentists across the country. Well, Ohio was fortunately, fortunate enough to have Dr. Frank Wright down in Cincinnati as our chairperson and for the whole state of Ohio for our association, and we had a pretty advanced team. And so we had, maybe about 20 people total that were actually trained at the level I was trained beginning. So as things progressed within Dayton and putting my team together, other cities started putting theirs together, and our training continued through the Ohio Dental Association. Then unfortunately, we came upon 9/11. And I first had a call from Wright-Patterson where I was dealing with the, a couple of the colonels out there in, on the private sector, and thought, well, maybe I'll go to the Pentagon. That didn't come to fruition, fortunately, because the number of deaths weren't significant. And they don't like having private people in there and they're doing their work anyway, and I understand that 100%. But then about 12 hours later, all of a sudden, we got a call from New York Medical Examiner's Office that they needed three people out of Ohio, since we were kind of in the, in the lead as far as the states go. So I was fortunate enough and had the honor of being chosen of one of the nine first responders into ground zero. A little bit of how that happened was, we didn't go until day five, actually, and ironically, on day four, we were teaching a course of mass disaster here in Columbus. So on day five, we had one of the first airplanes of Delta out in the air, and there was the three of us from Ohio, one from Vermont, and the other five were from California that they chose in the country to be first responders and get things rolling. And as we were flying in, we were coming into ground zero, and the pilot tilted his wing a little bit to the left where we were sitting, and we were looking down to the tragedy down below us and just looked at the devastation. Everything we'd been taught, and everything I taught my people, was going to have to do maybe 100 people dead, not 15,000, the original count was, they're suspecting. Fortunately, it was less than 3,000. We thought, how do we do this? And there's an F-16 on our tail to shoot us down if we varied off course. And it's like, what do we do? And, and we asked, I asked Dr. Wright, I said, you know, we've not been taught like this. We've been taught how to do 200 or 300 people dead, not 15,000. I remember he turned around, he said, "We're rewriting forensic dentistry today, and we're rewriting mass disaster and how we're going to respond." And he was right. So we landed on the ground in LaGuardia, and coming off the plane was the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office, and we had police escorts into lower Manhattan. And it became a reality, seeing the hole in the ground and being in police cars with their sirens running and having a police escort into lower Manhattan was very humbling. We got there, we got turned over to New York State Troopers as our protection. Again, there's only nine of us. Now, New York had some of their own forensic dentists, but we found out very quickly, and it goes back to this preparedness, which I'll talk a little bit later about personal as well, but back to the same thing we're talking about today, is that no one was prepared to handle something like this. And you think, New York City, as big as it was, ought to be able to handle this. Well, they were not prepared either. No one was. So it's, it was an interesting scenario looking, what do we do? I remember my first day in there, we're, if, we get out, we get off the, out of the police cars, throw our bags down, and next thing we know, we're in the, in the morgue doing bodies, doing jumpers. First body I did was one of the jumpers. I got a picture of her jumping. And then it was just a mess after that, but we didn't have nothing to work with. I brought X-ray equipment, we had Ty-Vac suits, which are impermanable suits, and to wear because no one was prepared to do this. And again, if it happened in Columbus, Ohio, they wouldn't be prepared either. So at that particular time. So all cities were on a, we were on a learning curve at that point of what to do in a mass disaster. And unfortunately, we had a lot of trauma surgeons showing up in, in lower Manhattan, and we didn't need them, they needed us as forensic dentists to identify the people. So it was, it was very humbling to be there. We only could stay a week. That's all we could really take emotionally to be able to do this. And sleeping on the floor in NYU, and, but it was an experience, even for the Red Cross, they fed us, and, but they weren't prepared for what there was going on at that time too. We'd never seen anything other than Oklahoma City that was like this. So after that, I began getting training, and our team kind of got diversified from the standpoint, I took on the anti-terrorism role, protecting us and not sending my people into harm's way without knowing what was going on. So the first course I took was by Homeland Security down in Cincinnati, and it was the only dentist there, and they had hospital administrators. They start talking about what, what do you need to have? What do we need to be prepared for? And it goes back to our personal lives, just not me as a forensic dentist preparing my team, but what do we do in our personal lives as well? So the first thing they said, we need to have water. Water is so important. And that's where you start at, but you start putting these, these bags together, your go-bags, what do you have at home? And you can get these lists off of the FEMA.gov website, whether there's, they have unique parts too, for pets and seniors and medication supplies, whether you're going to stay home, whether you're going to run. And I think about the times, if it's being Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, if they got attacked, and if it was a nuclear attack or something like that, how do you get away? What are you going to take? I mean, you grab the dog and get in your car and run? Or you're going to have something, you can throw a bag in and help your family out. But I talked a little bit about being prepared, and I won't drag on too long, Manos, but we first go into the water, and we need water as human beings. We can do about two or three days without water before we become ill. And a body can only take so much, I'm sure as my paramedic would say. We know that, that we may have to have water to survive, and two or three days is pushing it. But you can get water from all types of sources. I mean, at my own home, I have five-gallon water jugs that I have in my office, if I took some home, and they're my supply. We have gallon water jugs that we, I fill in a car with me. But what about if water's not available? What about if I'm going to run somewhere, I'm out of water? What do you do to be able to drink? You have to have water. Well, there's things out there, and I'm not, I'm not promoting this product, but there's a thing called Life Straws, little blue tubes about like this. You can actually stick them in a stream and drink out of it, and you can get quite a bit of water through there, and they'll filter through and they're safe to drink. Taking out the bacteria, you got to worry about cholera, and other germs are in, that are in this, in waters as we, in the stream or wherever you're getting it from. I have another thing that I have at home that's a filter that fits in two five-gallon containers. You drill a little five-eights hole in it, and you pour water in it, and it filters out all the bacteria and, and any other harmful things. You can drink the water that comes out. So our things, there are products out there you can buy to have safe drinking water. And I always talk about water first because it's so important to us. But you can get water from other things. You can get it from fruit juices, anything in a can that has liquids. So you're getting some water supplies. At home, you can get out of your hot water tank, or you can drain a hot water tank to be able to drink. So there's many different things that FEMA can, can help through training you. You can pull right off the internet on how, how to survive with water. The next thing is food, and this is where it gets a little controversial because there's a lot of people out there selling food. There's Wise Products sells, I've never bought their products, Cabela, those type of places sell five-gallon pails of 30-day supply of food. And when I first got trained, they said you need two weeks of food. Next time I got trained, it was a month of food. Next time after that, it was two months of food per person. The next time after that, it was six months of food. I get a little bit of this why. So, but you can go to Sam's or a place like Costco and you can buy your own, which I've done all of these. And the big thing is canned foods. I know they did a study a long time ago about canned foods, if they're, if they're bad after so long. Fruit juices seem to get bad quicker in my supplies, but you can still buy this, and they were tested food back to World War I. If the can wasn't dented, and you opened it up and it smelled okay, you were usually okay to eat. And I'm not promoting that, I'm just telling you that that's what the studies had showed at one time that I read. But, but you can buy a lot of different, different types of food. Peanut butter is a big one for proteins. When we had the swine virus going through, thinking it could be killing off a lot of our, our protein source. Avian flu with the birds and chicken and eggs, it was killing that supply of proteins off. So buying, buying peanut butter and foods with high protein like that, baked beans, are a food source that we can use. Vegetables, you have to be a little careful of because corn is not digested well, but there's other things you can, you can buy of peas and things like that that supplies those. Dried foods. When you're buying dried fruit, they'll last almost forever. And beef jerky and things like, things like that are dried, dried products, and that's one of these WISEs, and people like that will sell these and you add water to them. Some of my friends at Wright-Patterson got me some MREs I bought, so I have enough for 30 days of MREs. We've got a Marine there, I'm sure you've had a couple of those. They're delicious, aren't they? But they're nutritious, and that's what you're caring about, you're trying to survive. So food is, 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 again, how far do you go with this? I can't tell you. I can just tell you what I know they did a study a long time ago about canned foods, if they're, if they're bad after so long. Fruit juices seem to get bad quicker in my supplies, but you can still buy this, and they were tested food back to World War I. If the can wasn't dented, and you opened it up, it smelled okay, you were usually okay to eat it. I'm not promoting that, I'm just telling you that, that's what the studies had showed at one time that I read. But, but you can buy a lot of different, different types of food. Peanut butter's a big one for proteins. When we had the swine virus going through, thinking it could be killing off a lot of our, our protein source. Avian flu with the birds and chicken and eggs, it was killing that supply of proteins off. So buying, buying peanut butter and, and foods with high protein like that, baked beans, are a food source that we can use. Vegetables, you have to be a little careful of, because corn is not digested well. But there's other things you can, you can buy of peas and things like that that supplies those. Dried foods. When you're buying dried fruit, they'll last almost forever. And beef jerky and things like, things like that are dried, dried products, and that's one of these WISE, and people like that will sell these, and you add water to them. Some of my friends at Wright Patterson got me some MREs I bought, so I have enough for thirty days of MREs. We've got a Marine there, I'm sure you've had a couple of those. They're delicious, aren't they? So, but they're nutritious, and that's what you're caring about, you're trying to survive. So food is, 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 again, how far do you go with this? I can't tell you. I can just tell you what, I've been trained by the feds. And I think Rick kind of mentioned a lot of the things I've been trained by. Before I go into the other things, one of the big courses I took was by the Department of Justice, they sent me to Texas. It was called Enhanced Incident Command. It had nothing to do with my forensic training, forensic training. It had to do what I did as a politician at the time, what I did before I was a dentist. I ran a couple corporations. So I managed a lot of people, and this was all about incident command. This was if, if Columbus, Ohio, or Cincinnati, or Dayton got into a, a mass disaster, how do you control that, that scene? Our, our police officer knows how to do his incident command on a shooting incident like this for a school. We're talking about something large that I was thrown into by the FBI particularly. On how do I handle controlling a whole scene, setting up perimeter securities? And what's the primary and secondary ones? And what, and who do you call in on that? Who's your logistics on it? So that was one of the big courses I took, and now, and same being prepared on these. So I'll go through a couple of things. Medicine, I'm, I mean, I'm on meds right now. I took my blood pressure medicines. My mouth is dry. I'm up here talking to you, too, but blood pressure medicine's making you that way. It's only been more thirsty, I need more water. So making sure you have your meds, those are diabetic. You're going to go so long before your, your blood sugars will drop, and you're going to be in trouble. So you have to make sure you have your medicines with you. Simple things like Tylenol and Ibuprofen for pain. That's the big ones you need to have. So if you, whether you're at home or you have to leave, what are you going to do for protection if you, if you're not in a building somewhere? How are you going to survive with lighting, batteries? I put my batteries in the refrigerator, they seem to last a little bit longer. But I have a battery tester as well. When I go through and I check my batteries, and if they're down below in the, in the red area, they get thrown away. And so I have to get new ones. But having lighting and candles, and with all the LED out there right now, all the products are cheap, and they put out a lot of light, and there's some that are solar-powered, you can put, too. They got little, little things that, the solar power will hit, and they'll light up as, as these little boxes, and they're pretty cool, they float. So if you need something like that. If you are traveling, if you have to leave, what are you going to do for food supplies as far as cooking and heating it? What are you going to serve it on? So all those kind of come into play, and people think I'm crazy about this, but I will give you an incident. I was telling someone, I think I was telling Don this morning, I was, it was when, if you, those of you that are old enough, remember when Ike came through, the dry hurricane, had all those winds. And we lost trees, and I'm out with my, my police officers and trying to, we had trees and power lines down. But I went, and, and we, we, power was out for a couple of weeks in Dayton. And I don't know what it was in Columbus or where you're from, but it was a major problem. So I'm out with, at my nephew's house, and everybody's entering their freezers, had a big, big block party. Man, we had steaks and all these, all the great foods, and, and so I looked at one of the guys, I said, so what are you going to do next week? He said, what are you talking about? I said, what are you going to do next week? And I said, what are you going to eat? He said, well, the power will be back on. Is it? How you know it is? You don't know that. Are you prepared for that? Do you have any food put back, or whatever? So, so he kind of looked at me and thought I was crazy, and then they said, well, my nephew says this is what he does. And he said, I didn't think about that. Well, if that's a, two weeks, well, if it's a month. Now, what about your food supply? What about your water supply? What about if it's a contagion that's in the water supply and you can't drink the water? Then we're back drinking what's in, hopefully, that's clean in, in the water tank or whatever, you're trying to, trying to survive. So before I go any further on this, one of the things I did do with this incident command, we did four scenarios, and I ended up kind of running three of them. We did a biological, chemical, nuclear, or natural, natural disaster. And learning what happens in, in a biological, and, and our, our test was Ebola, and what happened with that, and logistics for that, and how do people protect themselves. And in chemicals, the same way, with sarin gas. Now, you get in the nuclear, it's a little bit different. If it's a true nuclear explosion, it's, 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 well, it's tough to be prepared for that, because you can't survive. But the other thing is an EMP, electromagnetic pulse. If that hits our power grids, we're in deep, deep doo-doo, because our power grids can't handle that. So every one of you have a cell phone in here, you're driving home in your car, your computers are running at home, or your business, whatever, are fried. The computer circuits are fried, they'll never work again. Your car will never run again. So those is back in kind of the Middle Ages, where we're at, on trying to survive on food, water, preparedness. I'll go back to preparedness again. What are we going to do with that? Well, if it happens, I'll just call my, my local EMS, I'll dial 911. Well, the phones don't work. Their, their fire trucks and their medics don't work. Their cars don't run. And if it did run, an area that wasn't affected, there's only so much, so much to go around. And I'll, I'll talk to Don and Rick about that. I mean, we don't have enough police officers and firefighters to respond to, to twelve different scenes at once. You got, you have a bombing or something that happens over here, how many people can respond if there's twelve of those goes on? There's not enough, you have to be able to take care of yourselves. And that's where it comes down to preparedness, and it kind of, and it relates back to someone coming into a, a school or a business with a gun. You got to learn how to help yourself until the help gets there eventually. Some of the other things that I'll just kind of go through briefly, we talked about meds and foods. One of the things I was taught was weapons. And this came about when Ike came, came through, when I was talking to these people. We had a local grocery store, and everybody was fighting for ice. We actually had fights in the town I lived over ice, bags of ice to preserve their food. Then we also had five generators came in, our tractor supply company, maybe in seven, I don't, something like that. We had, we had people fighting over generators. Well, they had to have gas at home, because you can't, they won't run without gasoline. Well, the gas pumps didn't work. So it just perpetuates itself, and what you have to think about being prepared. But there was nobody to come to your, your aid. If it's an EMP where the police can't respond, you got to protect yourself. When Katrina came through, I did not participate in it, I could not go. But my deputy chiefs did go, and they were told to bring a weapon. Whether you believe in weapons or don't believe in weapons, I will tell you, when it comes down to survival, you're going to survive. If you've got to feed your children, your grandchildren, I got two little baby grandchildren. If those people, if those babies are going hungry, I'm going to, I'm going to survive. I'm going to come take your food. That's pretty, sounds pretty bad, but I got, do I want my grandchildren starved to death? No, it's not going to happen. So, but that and protecting yourself against thieves, against rioting, and those types of situations, you got to be able to protect yourself. And again, Ike was, was a typical, typical scenario where it could have turned really ugly really quick. See, I want to talk about, we talked about Marshall alone and, and doing that a little bit. The websites, again, through FEMA, there's, there's numerous places to get it. Again, I have a couple of bags, I have a go-bag. Mine may be a little bit different than yours, because I carry a gas mask and Tyvek suits in mine, and tape, to tape them up. And anybody that does hazmat training, you know, you have to be able to tape your suits up, and so, because if you get sick, you can't help anyone else. So if you've ever been in the airplane, and they say, well, put your mask on first, that's because you got to be able to help somebody else. And that's what we're about, is helping people. And I, I speak at dental schools about this, and, and some of the, the, my young colleagues will look at me like, you know, you have a responsibility to help your, your human beings. You need to be able to do that. And if you're being given an education, you know, you're working through it, but help, give it back to the community, whether, whatever it's in, whatever you can help out. And that's when I got asked to do this, and I said, absolutely, I'll come do it. So I will tell you this in closing, and, because every time I'd come home from one of these training courses, my, my wife would look at me, she goes, I don't even want to know. What did he teach you this time? I said, well, something I can't tell you. And, but she goes, I said, well, we need to get some more of this, or this, this. And she goes, I don't even want to know anymore. Just ask, just tell me, are we prepared? Sometimes I think no, and sometimes I think yes. If we've reached a pinnacle of, of being complacent now, we've not had a major attack, we have these type of things in schools, these shootings, or bombings, or whatever. I know the one in Cleveland, they found some EOD, some bomb stuff up there, if I'm not mistaken, I had eight grenades or something, where'd you get that? But I had to live my life not being paranoid. I lived my life being prepared. And that's the last thing I can tell you, that's what you want to do. Be prepared in what in your life is, as for everything. But you can't go around being paranoid. We're in a different society than we were, this is not, those are older like me. Ozzy and Harriet was, was a day where my parents left their keys in their car out in the driveway. They didn't lock their doors at night. We're not going back to that again. So you got to be prepared for what's coming. And everything's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So whatever that scenario is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, Dr. McDonald. And thank you for all the work that you're doing, and the World Trade Center, and you said that you were there for a week because emotionally could not handle it. And I was in New York when it happened, I lived through it. No, I did not, I was not there, but I was traumatic for everybody, so thank you for Take a ten-minute break, have some coffee, and we'll move to the fun part, questions and answers, so. So see you in ten minutes. In case you did not guess, from my accent, I'm from Brooklyn. Well, I live in New York, originally from Greece, and I thought that the reason I was invited here was because I can actually pronounce under dollar just. But Rick did a good job saying it just right. Coming from Europe, actually, in addition to being on the Board of Directors in the Homeland Security Foundation of America, I also serve in a few other NGOs, either on the Board of Directors, on their, or on their Security Committee. I'm a chairman on a couple of them, UN-based NGOs. And we're dealing with similar situations on a more international level. You don't hear, and as I said at the beginning, most of the events are happening in the US. It's more of a coincidence. Don't think that in the US we're less prepared, or anything more weird is going on. Actually, you will be extremely surprised how unprepared people are in Europe. I will give you an example. There was, about six months ago, there was an event, that international event getting put together in Sweden. Everybody knows Sweden, everybody loves Sweden, everybody says how wonderful everybody in Sweden is, and how they hold hands and sing kumbaya together. And they do. However, the event was going to have some high-profile people, and was held in the middle of nowhere, somewhere in the mountains, which happened to be about forty kilometers, yeah, that's about thirty miles to translate, from a non-terrorist camp in Norway. So they knew that there was a threat there, okay? So we, we started talking with them about preparing, again, preparation. No matter which angle you look at it, everything is, the more prepared you are, the better the results. So we started talking about preparing, and we're like, okay, is there, at the hotel, do they have armed guards? They're like, oh, no, in Sweden, we don't have stuff like that. Okay. Is there somebody who would carry permit? That at least we can have somebody, again, in the middle of nowhere. Oh, no, in Sweden, we don't do that. Okay. So what do you do in Sweden? Oh, we call the police. Great. What's the response time? Best-case scenario, twenty-five minutes. So in New York, which is, okay, it's a little bit the other extreme, response time for the PD is three minutes, okay? Now, twenty-five minutes, if something like that happened in Europe, they will have a lot more victims. But again, preparedness, we're starting here, and the word does spread, they will get better over there. At this point, I would like to introduce Al Sultan, that he's been quietly sitting here all this time, that he's a digital counterterrorism and interfaith expert. What does that mean? Actually, why, also, why don't you tell us a little, very little, and we'll keep it short, so we'll go to questions and answers.
Sure, I'm, I'm usually up here talking about ISIS and, you know, how you can prevent domestic terror and international terror threats. But I think a lot of this leads to kind of the soft target argument. So in, in New York, you know, we've had the risk of, of car-based or vehicle-based attacks. I think we've been seeing these across Europe over the course of the past year, year and a half. And I want to talk through kind of like three scenarios, and, you know, I want to get the guys in to, to really comment on this, because these are the challenges that, that I see us dealing with. The first one is, you know, Manos was talking to Sweden, that, that goes back to Anders Breivik. Well, Anders Breivik, you know, was a white nationalist who went out and decided he was just going to open up on a youth group, and ended up killing somewhere between fifteen and twenty people, injuring about forty, you know? And this isn't a country that doesn't have guns, right? So these types of things are, are taking place around the globe in an increasing manner and fashion, and these are things we need to be prepared for. If you think back to Dylan Roof and the church attack that happened a couple of years ago, you know, Dylan Roof has been sentenced to death. But the, the question really becomes this, I'm going to talk about three different scenarios, and I'll open the floor to, to these gentlemen who, you know, have a lot more experience than I do in the active shooter part, I can talk to you about the, the terrorism part, but it's oftentimes very similar to what you're dealing with here. The first is, you know, if you're in a church. And so let's say there's a church that's a third of these seats, half of these seats, or all of these seats, right? You know, the Dylan Roof-type scenario. The second thing to think about is that, you know, there's a stereotype when you think about active shooters, and they're very happy to talk about a guy. But let's talk about YouTube, right? So YouTube had an active shooter female that walked in with an assault rifle and killed about three to five YouTube employees. And the reason I know this was because this was livestreamed and liveblogged on my Facebook by a bunch of people that I know that work there. And, and that's the second thing that you kind of have to think about, is what do you do inside of the, the office scenario, especially these new open plans, which there's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to run, there's nowhere to hide. And the third I'll talk about is schools, right? And so I think all of us know, and we've, we've seen the scenarios here, you know, what do you do in a school? But the question you have to, to ask yourself is, you know, how different is that from any of those either, the first two scenarios? And, you know, what are some of the lessons learned that we can kind of take from that? And I just want to open to you, and maybe I'll add some comments, you know, kind of from the CT side. But, you know, I think the, the takeaways that you guys should really have from, from this today are, are one, you know, you've seen the process and methodology by which we, we walk through for active shooter, right? You, you have a better understanding of some of the partners that we have, and what we can bring to bear inside of your organizations, as well as the education that can be levied. But realistically, it's what would you do in that scenario? And what can you do to impart in terms of small-scale training? Because that's really, it's, you know, it's train the trainer and syndicate that information. That's, that's the best way that we can get this stuff out. So, you know, I know we were talking about Q and A, but I thought it might be good to start out with this, and this might kind of seed the conversation, you know, to, to some of the bigger problems that we could solve. And just, you know, some of your initial thoughts on, you know, either the, the church scenario, or I would say the, the business scenario, which is becoming an increasing risk in the United States.
Well, I think, well, I think, you know, looking at the church scenario, we just recently were involved in a, in a church that, that had a threat come in prior to it, and we were involved in a church that had a threat come in just after our training. And if you can imagine a small church, the individual walked up, there was a door greeter. The greeter was shaking their hand, and started picking up on some non-verbals, and the, they didn't know what to do. They knew that this was a threat, but they didn't know what to do about the threat. And they were unsure about how to proceed, so what they basically did was just follow the guy around, which just made him more uncomfortable and more edgy. And made him more uncomfortable and more edgy. And what ended up happening is they talked with the pastor, and the pastor then engaged the person and talked to them and got, and basically de-escalated the scenario. So what we did was we went in and we did our site survey, and we did a, we talked about how they could do things to protect themselves. One thing was is to have a security camera outside of the church that is firmly planted on the front, you know, area where these people are entering and coming in. And having a sign that says something about, you know, this building is under surveillance. This in itself is a deterrent because we've seen, and we kind of laugh sometimes, when we see the gunman come up, realize, oh, my God, they've got a camera, goes back to the car, still in the camera view, puts a mask on, right? And then comes back up to do what he's going to do, right? It's kind of like America's stupidest criminals, right? You know? And but that deterrent, it says, I'm not going to get out of this. Now, a lot of these people are coming in, sometimes it's death by cop, it's a suicide type of action that they're engaged in. And they're not looking to get out. We said, why are you, you know, once church starts, why are you leaving your doors unlocked, right? Why are you allowing people in after your security parameters are in place, right? If you're back in the church setting and you're sitting there, you should have some sort of locking mechanism on the door and somebody that can be buzzed in. And that person should know who is in that congregation so that if it's an outsider, right, that you can kind of recognize that. Now, I understand in these big mega churches, that may not be, may not be a way of handling it. But at least having that person engaged up front and having them trained to be able to identify body language, types of attitudes, behavior, you know, even be able to identify whether or not this person is carrying a gun, you know? Start identifying these types of things up front. And then working them through the system. What I said, I asked this church, so you followed him around, right? And they're like, yeah. And he sat down in church, and the guy goes, I knew that he was a threat. I didn't know what to do. So I sat right behind him. I figure if he stood up, I was just taking him out, right? Well, you know, we live in a society where you can't just grab somebody and throw them to the ground because they stand up, you know? I mean, I saw many people here get up and walk out the door. How many of, how many people would have gotten tackled today if that was the parameter? So I think it's training them to be more situationally aware of the situation, putting pieces in place. And then we take them a step farther and said, okay, here's your escape routes. This is where you're going to go. Do you have a contract with your rally point? You know, do you have an agreement with that rally point? Who's carrying, you know, between point A and point B? You have a lot of elderly. How are they getting two blocks away and going to the CVS pharmacy or whatever? You know, how are you instigating this escape plan? And what are those pieces? The other thing that we did is we identified locker rooms, right? We identified places that you can put people. Well, engaging all those different aspects, getting them more situationally prepared, and getting them equipped with the right tools and equipment to keep themselves as secure as possible. We're like, you have two doors coming in here. You have the front door, and then you have a door going into the sanctuary area. Is that door at the sanctuary area able to be barricaded, locked, shut? And what do you have in place at that point to get people out? The other thing that we run into periodically is secondary ways of targeting people, right? So Columbine, they had bombs out in the parking lot. Now, those bombs didn't detonate, right? But the whole purpose of those bombs out in the parking lot was to create explosions as law enforcement and EMS was arriving, and to blow up cars to make more destruction. It didn't happen. They weren't skilled at what they did. And so how do you, how do you plan for all these different, different things? That church, we had one where they had an active shooter come in. They had a gentleman come in that was a threat after we had trained, and they mitigated that threat as a church body. Now, I always tell people, and I kind of joke, I'm like, you know, the Bible will save you, right? But this, and this could be literal, too. You know, you could chuck a Bible at somebody's head, you know? And, and so from that standpoint, they actually responded and got this guy under control. And once he was, you know, he was handcuffed, he was in the ambulance, you know what? That pastor rode back with that guy to the hospital and talked with him on the way in. And I was like, you know what? That is, that is a pretty powerful, pretty powerful man. Yes, sir.
When you see a certain area with a guy sitting behind you, is that, would that be part of something you should do when you see somebody getting closer?
I totally believe that. You know, if you, if you come up and engage that person ahead of time, I think that that's the first step, is engage in that person, finding out where their heart is, finding out where their head is, right? You'll see it in their eyes, you know? If anybody's looked eye to eye with a killer, you know that there's a different type of eye set, you know? They look differently at you, they respond differently to you, their facial expression is much more flaccid. They don't care, right? One of the, one of the things I tell people, because one of the questions is, is in a school, should we arm our teachers, right? Well, it's kind of taboo and different, different thought processes. But my honest opinion is, is I say, you know, think back like Billy the Kid, back in those days where you have a gunman that is a sociopath and is able to pull that weapon out and pull the trigger. If you have somebody with a gun, are you going to be able to respond? Is that person going to try to mitigate the problem? Well, I think, I think mitigation at that time is too late. I think it's mitigation as that person's arriving, understanding who that person is. And in that church scenario, coming in, engaging that person, you may have deterred the entire event. And it ended up happening when the pastor came up and talked to him. Sitting behind them, you know what? If that guy stands up and he starts pulling a gun, it's probably a really good spot to be because you can pull him backwards over the back of that pew and put him on the floor, you know? Or, you know, in any, in any sort of situation. So I guess an answer to that is engage them first, right? Figure out what they're there for. And try to mitigate the situation before it escalates. And then try to bring them down in the way that they're thinking and get them, get them some help, you know? And sometimes it's too late, but hopefully, hopefully you can, yes, sir?
Well, in an answer to that, I mean, there are a lot of scenarios where that can take place. You identify that there's a threat, that there's a situation. This person is letting you know that he's a threat in some way. Maybe you haven't seen a weapon, but he's aggressive in his behavior. And it depends. I mean, if you have any kind of training or skill or background at all, you can utilize that in the way that you approach. If you don't, if you're just a church member that's maybe been involved in some of this training, and you have been told what warning signs are, and you're going to approach, a lot of times, the thing is, if they get ignored, if you realize that they're there, but you let them go ahead and go over there and sit by themselves, you're more likely to see them go follow through and become a threat. But if you actually confront them, whether it's from the front, from the back, from the side, and let them know that you're here, we're in close proximity, I'm going to sit down here, Joe's going to sit behind you, and so on, they're less likely to do what they came in to do. Yes?
With intention?
No. No, just engage by a presence. And the thing that we teach...
That might have a bad idea.
Right. And in every group that you teach, and let's use the church scenario. If we're in here now and we're teaching a church active threat training, we're going to have a whole different variety of people. We're going to have people in this church that are going to be those people that would go right up next to that guy and sit down, that would be waiting and looking for him to do something so that they can react because they're right there close. In the training, we're going to teach them what to do so that immediately when they see the threat, they react, attack. Because he's not looking to be attacked, he's looking to attack. When you attack the attacker, you take away his power. So there are going to be people in that group that are going to be those people. There are going to be other people that are going to be freeze, panic, drop to the floor, do nothing, can't get away, can't run, can't help, nothing. And then you're going to have those that are going to be the fight or flight. They're going to flee, they're going to run away. And so we train everybody the same. And everybody's going to pick up on that thing that they do the best, or where they are in proximity to the threat. And so that's what we try to do. You got those people, and you identify that, you help your church identify that. When you're going through the training, it's easy for us to see it. We can tell the pastor, these five guys over here are going to be the ones, when they see that guy, if they think something's wrong, they're going to stick to him. They're going to make him have second thoughts about doing what he came to do. And if he goes ahead and does it, and they follow what they've been trained, and they react right away because they're in close proximity, they can stop the threat. These people are going to do this. And we want them to know how to do it. We want them to know how to run, we want them to know where the rally point is, to get away and wait so they're accountable for, so they have medical help, so they're protected. And that's the thing, you know, everybody's going to have, you have that different aspect of the way we look at it. Of course, you know me, I'm going to be right next to them, like, what are you going to do? You know? And wait. Because that's where I do what I do the best, is right here. I don't want to be across the room where, and that's another thing. You may have that guy that's one of us that would greatly appreciate the fact that we can engage, but we're across the room, you know? So now you've got to make a decision. He starts opening fire, are you going to run? Are you going to run towards him? And you're going to have people that are going to do all that. So it's a variety of people. And it doesn't matter what city, if it's a church, if it's YouTube, if it's a school, you have that all the time. So the training is adapted to that so that everybody gets the same thing, but certain people pick up on what they're going to do. That's what makes it all work, is we don't want everybody to do the same thing. We want people to know that they can utilize all this if they have to.
I'd like to add one thing. I took care of a gentleman by name of Senator Matsunaga, and he taught me something early on. He said that peace comes with a smile, right? Peace comes with a smile. Now, this guy has done international, you know, meetings with both friends and foes. So the guy comes in the back door, and you're looking at the safe distance, right? And you recognize that he's not supposed to be there. Just smiling at the guy, just engaging him with your eyes from a distance, and walking up towards him, right? That forces his choice, that forces his options at that moment. He's planned it in his head already, and it obviously wasn't as he walked in the door to be engaging, right? So if you can engage that person as you're walking up towards him, hey, how are you, you know? And you start walking towards him with a smile, you know? And all of a sudden, that human, that human nature starts kicking in. He's either going to respond right then, or he's going to be de-escalated in some way. So.
I'd like to kind of go back to what I alluded to when I first started speaking at the podium about, thinking about my own dental office, but thinking about where you work, whether it's a hair salon, or dental office, or an insurance office, or whatever, and how would you handle that scenario, whatever that soft target may be where you're at, a restaurant? And what would you do in those scenarios? And I think that's what these guys teach on how do you respond? And do you run and hide, or do you fight? And when is the appropriate time to do it? And like I say, everything's dynamic and fluid. There's no, there's no rulebook on how it goes down. But we have a lot of soft targets around the world. It's not, I mean, in Columbus, and Ohio, and the United States, wherever, that are potential targets. And we always don't have to talk about using a gun to do this, whether it's a semi-automatic, or a handgun, or a knife. It could be a baseball bat, a hammer. How many deaths we have in hammers last year was ridiculously high, a lot more than it was with guns. So, but there's also bombs. You look at Oklahoma City, I'll go back to that again. This guy pulled a U-Haul truck up there with fertilizer in it. And those things are monitored on how much people are buying fertilizers and things, I know that. But still, someone could still do it. And you have to be aware of your surroundings. And that's what I always try to tell people, that be aware of, is there a package laying over there that's been unattended? You know, TSA and the airports and places like that, you know, those are hard targets. Those are tough to create a problem in. Soft targets are not, whether it's a church, a school, and you start thinking about it, is where's the next place they could hit? A room like this? And what's the death toll on something? Would it be, they get their own, their 15 minutes of fame because they killed 100 people in here? I think about, World Trade Center is less than 3,000, but how easy would it be to go into a place that has more than 3,000 people and get that kind of death toll? And so you have to be aware of what you're, where you're at, what's around you. And you can't be, have your head in the sand. You have to be prepared. Not, just not from what I was talking about, but prepared of what you're going, how you're going to respond as a human being.
One of the biggest things that I can say, no matter what the situation, if we use these three, where it's a church, where it's a place, a location like YouTube, the school, the school actually probably has the advantage. Because they, if they're trained, if they have this training and they know what to do, and they have information, which is one of the key things in this, is information. I know where the shooter is. The principal saw the shooter, he goes on the paging system, and he tells us. So that gives us the power to know, he's in hallway A, and we're in B and C, that means he's a long ways from us, we can escape. But if we're in A, we know we need to lock down. And if we lock down and we barricade and we get ready and we do the things that we're trained to do, that we saw those kids doing those videos, they're effective. And that's what you do. So they have the benefit of knowing ahead of time. Where you run into the worst problems is YouTube. Random. Just somebody walked up and there's a group of people, they might be out in the plaza taking a break, having a cigarette, drinking their coffee, you know, whatever it is, and they just came up and opened fire. That's really hard to prepare for. That's harder to tell people what to do. So instead of trying to pick out specifics and say, if that happens, or if this happens, do this, we do it in a general manner. We give you the tools, we teach you how to do countermeasures, we teach you how to do takedowns, we teach you that if there's enough of you and you sit on top of them and do what we call the swarm, what you saw those kids do, pile on somebody. Give you all those basic tools. We teach you to run, hide, and fight, we do all that. But the biggest thing from the starting of the training, and in this, this meeting today, the biggest thing I want people to walk away with is the same thing. Mentality that we have created and that we have adopted to of being victims, of just dropping down and hiding behind that chair if the shooter's right here. And there's 10 people there that have purses and sodas and coffee cups and everything else in their hand, and the shooter's right there, and you don't even know he's a shooter. He just walks up, pulls the gun out of his computer bag, bang, bang, bang. If you drop to the floor and hide, he's going to shoot you. If you try to crawl away, he's going to shoot you. We want to change your mentality to stop doing that. Know how to survive. Take these tools and survive. One of the examples we use in training that fits these things...
One of the examples we use in training that fits these things, because it's a surprise attack, and it's right now, without warning, at YouTube, person pulls the gun, starts shooting, there are people far away that aren't going to be able to get there. But there were people right close to that woman when she started shooting. If they have this training and they know what to do and they do it, it's as simple as going back to Colorado Aurora movie theater. You guys are all in the front two rows of the theater. What do you got? Soda pop, popcorn, people have purses, cell phones, whatever, in your hands. So we teach countermeasures, which is throwing things, distracting, disrupting the shooter from trying to aim a gun and pull the trigger. If you're ducking and dodging things, which is a natural instinct, you can't fight it, you can't beat it. Somebody throws something at you, you're going to duck, so you're not shooting. And while they're doing that, and they're trained to attack and go after this person and knock him to the ground and subdue him and swarm him and sit on top of him, he's not shooting. In Aurora, Colorado, movie theater, popcorn, soda pop, it's not going to hurt. It's not going to hit him and injure him, but it's going to distract him while you're moving over those rows of seats and make a plan with five or 10 people and you take him down. It has to be that mentality of instead of ducking and dodging and hiding and running, if you're right there, you've got to take him out. And that's what we try to leave people with, no matter what the situation is.
You're buying time.
You're buying time.
One of the things that I think people forget about is that as humans, we're kind of stupid animals still, right? We're in a way that something like that happens, all of a sudden, we're responding with our nature. But all it takes is one guy, one person, one gal that says, get him, right? By throwing out an idea and seeing somebody engage in that idea, and we see it working, everybody then engages in the same thing. It's kind of that, you know, sheep following the leader mentality. And so I know that there's people in here, I've talked to you, that have had Alice training and have been through these programs. Well, if a shooter were to come into any area that you're in, realize that you yourself may be the only person that is knowledgeable enough on what to do. Those people at YouTube were caught off guard, right? But if there was one of you guys that had been through some training, and you're like, get her, right? And everything, purses start going flying through the air, coffee starts flying through the air, and you know what? That person's going to decrease that death toll every time, every time. So just by being vocal, instead of being fearful, instead of taking that moment, run with it and become a leader. Situational leader, situational hero.
There's one last scenario I wanted to talk about real briefly. And this is, how many of you are from larger cities? Okay, so there's something we're seeing in Harlem, well, not Harlem, in the Bronx right now. We've got gangs taking over territory again like they did in the 80s and 90s, okay? And so everyone talks about Chicago, and they talk about the death toll and it being in the hundreds. What no one's talking about is I have the same death toll in the Bronx right now, okay? And one of the things that we have to start looking at, and I don't know if any of you have paid attention to what the news has been, but you know, these gangs are going after people. You'll have two or three of them, you'll have basically packs of shooters. So if the trend is, you know, the trend is if it's fashionable in New York, it becomes fashionable everywhere eventually. And so the thing I just want to point out is something that I'm trending and tracking with some of the pastors that we're talking to in our neighborhoods, is if you were in a scenario, like I'll give you, we had a kid dragged out of a bodega by three gunmen and dragged to death about two weeks ago. And, you know, this made regional news, I don't know if it made national news. But from the same type of situational awareness tactics, okay? We're talking the same things here. We're talking about replacing the fear with know-how. We're talking about taking away your panic and putting in protocol. What are some of the basics that you would speak to in a scenario like that?
One of the best things that I think we can do and what we try to utilize in the training is not just show you a video, not just tell you that, okay, if this person comes in, you take down. But we do hands-on. And because one of the biggest things that occurs when this happens, if you're been told, you know, or you realize that these threats are there, where somebody can just come up and jump you and take advantage of your, you know, being alone and things like that, and they take advantage of the fact that they believe you're afraid of them and all that. When that occurs, if you have some kind of background, if you have some kind of training, you're better off. You're better off knowing and having those things in place. But it doesn't really work well if you just explain to people how to do things. If I taught my classes and said, okay, I got some pictures up here, and here's the two girls by the door, and seeing the picture, they got their arms around this guy's feet, and he's going to fall down, and, you know, they get it. But what makes it effective is doing it. So when we do the training, we go hands-on. We bring people up from the audience, and we bring somebody up, and we put the mask down, and we say, this guy, okay, he's just going to walk through here like he would when he's coming through that door, and these two girls are going to do this takedown the way we teach them how to do it. And so they actually put their hands on it, see how it works, and realize, wow, he's just walking a normal pace. And when I go like that around his ankles, he trips. And if my girl here next to me pushes him at the same time, he goes down even quicker. So we show them how to do it. And then we put them in that live scenario where there's actually some fear. That guy's out there banging on the door in this scenario, scaring them. They know that he's going to come in, and they're nervous about everything. So it puts it in kind of a live, real situation. And when we do the training, that's what we want to do and focus on. And then when you have that, you don't have to stop and think. Because that's the key to what Oz is saying, is if you have to stop at that moment and try to think of what to do, you're not going to be effective. If you already know what to do and you've already practiced it, you don't have to think, you react. The quick reaction is going to be the key to saving you and being able to get away from that situation.
I think looking or thinking about this scenario. You know, three gunmen coming up and all of a sudden grabbing this guy and dragging him to death. And, you know, so many times, we always focus on the single gunman, right? Realize that disruption is our biggest ally here. If you can disrupt what they're trying to do, right? Maybe you may not be targeting all three, you target one. I mean, we've seen, like, in Mexico, you know, a 78-year-old retired Marine, right? That is on a trip, and a cartel pulls the bus over, and they, multiple gunmen, and they get out, and this guy ends up stabbing somebody to death, you know? This old retired Marine ends up taking the guy down, disrupting the entire thing, and they don't know what to do. Their leader just got taken out, right? Or their person in that scenario just got taken out. It disrupts it. If you can disrupt it, you still may end up dead, right? You still may end up in trouble, but you're doing something. And a lot of times, you can get yourself and extricate yourself out of that situation by disturbing it. These guys...
I just to synopsize that, think about this. It's taking your opportunity potential of being or dead above zero, okay? Because your option in these scenarios is or dead. And if you can get that to 50%, I think those are some good odds.
Yeah. And it just goes back to doing something and not doing nothing.
I want to emphasize one last point, that every scenario is different. Most of the time, you cannot be prepared for a specific scenario. You try, when you have a church, when you have a school, you try to prepare. But each one is unique. Perfect example, even, we say school, right? School starts from kindergarten and goes college, we imply everything. The same rules, whatever that video that we saw can work perfectly in college, probably in high school, nothing below that. However, there are other things, like kindergarteners, you cannot evacuate them as easily because they will start screaming and yelling, and we all know how they get. But in a scenario like that of an elementary school, it's much easier to identify a criminal walking in trying to do damage because chances are he won't be a little kid. So there are alternatives, we're trying to identify everything and adapt in every situation. But, and that goes back to our campaign, which is aware, awareness. This is the important part. When you start thinking, when you start discussing this stuff with your friends, that's what will make the difference. So I would like to thank everybody for coming here today. I would like to thank once again our sponsors. And one last request, those of you that you have a smartphone, if you don't mind, go to www.hsfus.us. Take your time to go now. And give us some feedback, we would like to improve this. This is the first of a series of meetings and presentations. So we're looking forward to improving and adapting it, getting your feedback and making it better. Thank you again, have a great day.